Okay, we'll bring the September 22nd, 2025 work meeting to an end. First item, council salary discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've got three items for you this evening. The first is council salary discussion. We, I think the prior council had, we've included some notes in here on the prior council. They had a discussion about that. And there was some interest in bringing this back to kind of talk a little bit about it and see if there's direction moving forward. I know we've included in the budget an increase back then. We did not increase it this time, but, but there would be enough money in the budget if you guys were looking to modify the, the salaries. As you can see, it's, back in 94 was the last time was changed, or 2005 rather, was changed and started in 94. And it's been quite a few years since there's been an adjustment to this. I know that there's been some addition of responsibility in terms of transitioning EDA over to council. So there's more meetings that, that folks are attending and more time being spent. So I will leave it at that and answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, if you guys want to have a discussion on this, we can go from there.
Would you say the last time it was increased, 2005?
2005, yeah. October 2005 was the last time it was changed. And if it is changed, it would not go into effect until January after the next election. So next year.
January 1st, '27.
Yep. So there is some time there, but nevertheless, it's good to, I know last time it was discussed, there was an election coming up right away, so we did include it in the budget in the event that, that would have passed. And, and we can certainly look at the budget or we can increase it next year to, to account for this. Either way is fine.
But it has to go after an election year?
Why is that?
Sorry?
Why?
State law.
Why is it after the election?
It's state law.
Yeah.
It's a state law?
Yeah. So the constituents can have a chance to respond to that if they so wish.
Okay.
I, I think partly also so that if people are in here, they can't just give themselves a raise and immediately get it. I think there's some protection for that. That's why there's that delay.
Yeah, the process like, if we were to move forward on this, we gotta give a staff direction to start the new ordinance and that, and then we move forward through the process of making it public and everything.
Yeah, the current ordinance is right here in terms of the amounts. Mayor is $5.25 per month. The council members are $4.75 per month. And I don't know if it's, if you're interested in a dollar amount or if you're interested in a percentage, or if you're interested in a either/or plus an escalator, we can include that as well. Because oftentimes councils find themselves kind of behind the game just because they haven't addressed it or whatever. And other, other councils have regularly addressed it, so.
I've noticed on some of these cities where they keep the salary and what they've did is did a per diem for extra meetings. I've noticed that quite a bit on cities around us.
I'm interested in moving forward with it. I'm thinking though that, and I don't know how difficult this was, but where it would be automatic with the negotiations where whatever, once we get this percentage up, once all the negotiations happen, the way it goes with the city, it would go with the council. I mean, it's, it's not going to affect me because that's going to be years in advance, but I think it should be something more automatic. And then if they want to increase the automatic part, they could vote to do that themselves.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, at the county, we did that specific thing. And then commissioners then could agree to take it or not take it if they, you know, didn't want to take an increase, they could voice that and.
Yeah, there, there are some cities that do take it as, as the COLAs are adjusted each year. They adjust it for the council members to.
Yeah, I think it should be that way.
With the whole staff.
I think that would help all the future council people then.
Yeah, then it's pretty much set in stone and you don't have to have discussions like this.
How much are we considering as an increase? That's it.
Didn't you just go through that? What it was?
Right, there is what it currently is, but I think Councilmember Mundell's asking how much are you thinking of increasing or what's the discussion on?
Is it?
Percentage of increase or amount or?
Is it $25 a month or $100 a month, some sort of figure of?
Yep.
I was thinking like 10%, but it could be $25 too.
10% would be a 52.50 for the mayor and 47.50 for the council members.
Mm-hmm.
Which would add to the budget $960.
Not a whole lot of impact.
You're quick with math.
No, I've got it.
You got it down, okay.
Yeah. So it's only basically 0.00189% of the budget.
To be specific.
I think so.
Yeah, it's fine.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, a 10% increase for adjustment and then following COLA for the subsequent years?
Makes sense.
Okay. What we can do then is we'll bring this back as a change to the ordinances then and incorporate that in there with the necessary legalese. And then you guys will have another chance to take a look at it and vote on it and, and go from there.
Thank you.
That work?
Yeah, that'll work.
Yep.
I worry a lot of people realize that we're gonna have so many meetings that we do. That's the whole thing, the council and we're liaisons for a bunch of different committees. Now EDA is on top of that.
Work sessions.
I mean, we work sessions.
Can you speak into your mic? I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's why some cities have went to that per diem. They, they kind of disguise it a little for the extra meetings.
Right.
Okay, item two.
Okay, item two, Mr. Mayor and Council, is the, I'm just gonna go up here so the title is correct. Animal Containment City Service. I wanted to bring this forward to the council so we could have a discussion about kind of where we currently stand. Right now, the Animal Humane Society did send us a letter saying that they are kind of getting out of this business in terms of offering service to the cities. They did put in this line right here that says, while we won't be offering impound services, we will continue to accept strays found by members of the public for appointments for owned animals and provide low-cost veterinary care for the community and partner with law enforcement to handle, handle animal cruelty cases at no charge to the municipality. So, so essentially what, what happens today is law enforcement is contacted, we see a loose dog or whatever the case is, officers pick it up and then bring it to whoever we've contracted with in the past to, to impound these animals, provide these services. What the off, and we spoke about this at the last staff meeting as well. What the officers can do is say, you know, instruct the individual who found this dog or animal to take it to the Animal Humane Society in which they say they'll continue to accept strays. City of East Bethel doesn't have too many every month that, that we had, although I think some of the larger, more costly ones that we were dealing with were the dog bites and whether they had vaccines, rabies vaccine and keeping them in there for 10 days and they could only be in a separate cage. Costs got significant for those particular instances. But at any rate, you know, you, you get into, the question now is, does the city provide this service? And of course, we're in the service industry, right? The city is in the service industry. And, and you have to make that policy decision then of what services do you want to provide? Do you plow snow when it's half an inch or two inches? You know, I mean, those are the type of policy questions you make, and this is one as well. So I wanted to bring this to council just to have an open discussion about your feelings on, on whether we should be pursuing other entities. There are other individuals that provide this service. One is up in Isani and one is further out. But, you know, there's a cost associated with that. Obviously, if they have to drive to pick up animals or meet officers or something like that, it's going to be a, a cost to the city to do that. So I wanted to just have a, wanted to just have a discussion on that.
Matt, have you heard from what other cities are looking at doing?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I got a call from Ham Lake to see what they were doing, and I believe a lot of them are going with the individual up in Isani right now. City of Coon Rapids, City of Ramsey are utilizing the City of Anoka. They built an $8 million facility and, and they're providing services to neighboring So that's, that's kind of where that's at.
Well, we have the option of not having it and having people themselves bring strays down. We have the option of finding out what other animal control services are out there. As a little bit of a history lesson, before East Bethel did have an animal control service, there was a kennel at the Public Works Building that deputy would pick up a dog and bring it there. And staff would have to come in and take care of it. If it was on a weekend, staff would have to come in and do a daily visit or two.
Sure.
So I, I think we should get requests for proposals, see what else is out there. And whatever other information we can get so we can make an informed decision on this. Mr. Look, did you, have you been in communication with the Humane Society as far as giving, like giving them phone call or talking with them?
I have not. Mr. Mayor and Council, contacted the Humane Society, I've just gone off of their letter.
Okay.
I think they've sent it to multiple municipalities, so.
Okay, we might want to confirm that the, the sentence that you, or the paragraph that you referred to, to make sure that, double check that what we are thinking that they will do.
Right.
That they will actually do.
So we have this, our contract through December 31st, 2025 with them. Coming up, coming up fast.
So I have a question. You said it was gonna, there would be an expense to the city. The city would require the dog owner to reimburse it, right? That would be a requirement or not?
Generally not, unless it's a dog bite scenario or a rabies impounding scenario. At that point, you could, we, you know, the Humane Society was holding the animal to release the animal, the owner would have to pay that bill. In some cases, they did not. In some cases, the, you know, the owner would surrender the animal or just not show up. And at that point, we got numerous calls to try and determine, what, what do you want to do with this animal, right? Because the costs keep going up. So it's, there is a cost to the city. There always has been a cost to the city. We get a monthly invoice from the Humane Society for, for services rendered. Yeah, it's, it's maybe part and parcel with living in the country. I think a lot of people, you know, kind of let their dogs run, run around a bit. And, and I'm picking on dogs because it seems like that's, I know we just had a pig most recently here. I'm sure there's cats and other animals too, but.
There's cows, goats, seen them all.
Yeah, so, but I think most of the time we see dogs kind of run at large and, and people call on those and, and there is a certain risk. I mean, if the city provides this service, I'll give you an example. In the City of Ramsey, there was a, the city provided the service, a lady called that there was a loose dog, officer showed up, didn't have a restraining device in his, in his squad car, so he had to go back to the police station and get the restraining device. And in the meantime, the lady let her child play with the dog, who proceeded to bite the child. The dog bit the child. And she sued the city. She sued the city. So the ultimate, the outcome of that was a settlement through the League of Minnesota Cities. They're, they're good at settlements. And, and I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $80,000. I did not vote for that. I felt that I was making cities a soft target for foolishness. And the rest of the people did vote for it, so that did pass. So if you provide this service, you have liability. If you put in parks, you have liability. There are, you know, there are certain things that when you engage in, in that, you will assume a liability with that. So that's, that's the ultimate question. I mean, based on the number we have, this may, could feasibly not be a service provided by the city, but rather, you know, informing the public that if you see a loose dog, take it to, you know, after Councilmember Mundell's suggestion to, you know, to, to verify that, that one sentence in the letter, that if that's the case, that take it to the Humane Society and they'll, they'll be able to handle strays.
Can we go back to what Suzanne said a second ago? We were talking about the city gets billed from the Humane Society for these things, but when you pick up the dog, you have to pay the Humane Society. So does that offset anywhere or do we automatically have to pay a certain amount every time a dog from this city goes to their facility?
I'd have to look at the invoices again specifically for what billings occur, but yes, my understanding is we get billed for that service. Per animal, there's a rate and fee. I can pull up that contract, but have to do some digging to get that. I can forward that to you all. The issue is, is getting that money from the owners. You know, that's where the battle somewhat starts. You don't have, you know, a house or property that you could, you know, levy that against in their taxes. It's, it's if they're not going to pay, city's gonna have to eat it.
I'd be curious to see what the bill looks like because if, if they're charging to get the dog back and I want my dog back, I'm paying it. It is, I can't see why they would charge the city for that then. It's just, just curious.
Contract quick.
Yeah, I do believe we always paid whoever our animal control was, we always paid. There is always something in the bills list for the animal control.
I'm just curious why we never build back when the Humane Society builds back, you know, to get your animal?
Yeah.
If that was included in what they were collecting, I don't, I don't know.
I agree.
See if I can pull this up here, if this is the right one. Here's the Animal Humane Society impounding. Come on. Just run that through it here quickly.
Does the Sheriff's Department charge us for that too? For picking them up like that?
We have a contract with the Sheriff's Office.
That's included?
Yeah. So standard hold fee for stray and abandoned animals of 236 per canine, feline is 54. 650 for stray and abandoned animals with illegally mandated hold or quarantine. This is where it gets expensive, this part here. One, one animal that was in there was in the neighborhood of $2,000. And I know the individual who owned it just, they did not have the money to pay, so they tried to work out something. Administrative processing fee, disposal fee, so they do charge us. However, they break it out. At any rate, I would assume, I would assume that if we go over a request for quote, that everyone is familiar with the same sort of language, same sort of costs. And the only difference would be if they have to travel certain, you know, mileage to get there.
On average, how many animals is it a year? Do you got a estimate?
We don't know how many get dropped off there by people, but I think from our, I'm taking a wild guess here, but I think from our law enforcement, I think it was a couple a month. Couple of months, so 24 a year, but obviously that's, that's a shot in the dark because some months could be a lot more than others. Drawing off the memory of one time I saw there were two, and I don't think there was significantly more than that. So ideally, we'd like everyone to keep their animals, you know, fenced or on leash or, you know, in their yard, but, but sometimes, sometimes they like to run.
Especially during storms.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yep.
I just had a second text to, we're not on YouTube. It's not, there's no picture.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we are recording for YouTube right now, but unfortunately, we're not able to go live for some reason, so we will have that available. At a later time, we have our, one of our staff members coming in for the actual council meeting, so not the work session. My apologies.
I do have another question. You said Anoka has a, Anoka County has an $8 million facility for animal control? Is it strictly for, or is it?
City of Anoka.
This, oh, it's just the city?
Mm-hmm.
Where is this building? I've never heard of it. It's.
I believe it is over by the fire station, police and fire station they have there on Harrison.
Okay, on the north side of the government facility?
Yep.
North of Jackson.
Interesting.
I'll have to get this too.
So what I'm hearing is we want to check on that one sentence and check if there's any possibilities of any other.
An RFP, yes.
RFPs out there for this moving forward.
Okay.
Say that's the first step.
Everybody agree on it? All right, let's move on.
Okay.
Go to item three, the park and trail fees discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, the park and trail fee discussion was brought up and we wanted to bring this with specifics back. I, I had Nate kind of put together his information back in March 14th of 2023. This discussion was had on park and trail fees, and it was established, there was kind of two ways of doing it, either a flat fee or a percentage of property, and it was decided that a flat fee was going to be the way it would be done. And, and so that's kind of what's, what's gone forward. There was, the discussion then is, should we increase fees? Are the fees enough? And currently, right now, we have a $2,000 park dedication fee for new lots, single-family home developments, and a $1,500 unit fee for new developments with multifamily homes. And, and we, we kind of compared it to other communities that were out there. This is some of them here and what they're currently at. 2,500 per lot for Ham Lake, Oak Grove's 2,300, Isani's 1,500, St. Francis is 2,300, Andover is 4,806. So as you get a little closer to the cities there, it, southern side of Anoka County gets a lot more expensive. But the, the part that you may want to consider is, there's two aspects to this. Obviously, you want to encourage development, you don't want to discourage it with, with increased fees, but you do want to cover your costs. The second part of it is, is the popularity of trails these days. And, and trails are a, you know, can be a very costly item to maintain. They, they get broken up with tree roots, they have the freeze and thaw issues just like roadways do. They're generally asphalt, which means that you need to replace them at some point and it's costly. If you don't own a trail machine, which some cities do, to try and combat those costs, then it's, it's rather expensive to call in a contractor to redo those, those trails for you. But that was, that's a second part of this discussion. I wanted to, so initially, there was a park fee discussion, but I wanted to put in the trail fee there as well because that might be an area where if you're looking to kind of try and offset some of the known expenses that, that come about and try and build up a fund so that you can connect some of these developments that are happening to existing trails. I know there's a master trail plan, but it's difficult to accomplish a trail plan without funding for that trail plan. Some communities have a master trail plan and then as development comes, they say you need to include this trail in your, in your plan there to connect from here to there or whatever the case is. We don't necessarily have that, but, but that may be an area where you want to, you know, focus if, if you feel that 2,000 is, is competitive, you may want to focus on, on looking at, on looking at possibly a trail fee. But at any rate, this was kind of the discussion back then and, and I guess the discussion here is, is this adequate for now or should we look at revisiting that? If we look at revisiting this, these. If we look at revisiting this, these fees are, are adopted every year in January. So, um, we would, we would be able to make those changes then coming at the beginning of the year.
Well, I personally want to look at it because I look at the park budget every time they, it comes out, and I keep thinking, why don't we have money to, I mean, why, to do more things earlier? You know, we're booked out of things that we want five, 10 years from now, and we don't have the money to do the things that we want, we would like to do. We have a great set of parks, but they are declining quickly, they get vandalized, and things need to be replaced and for safety situations and just for additional things. And the trails, I would love to see more trails out here, uh, but again, we can't afford it. The trail that was on, I don't remember, was it Baton or one of those streets up there? I called it the Trail to Nowhere because it made no sense that there was a, a trail going from that road and not the road that had Booster Park on it where people would actually probably use it. It made no sense. But, um, I, I would love to see more trails. I would love to see us be able to do more for, with our parks, add more, um, add a fitness trail, add this, add that, uh, add some of these permanent, uh, bag tosses and, um, horseshoes and just different things that people would bring more, not the little kids, but the middle, middle-aged kids could participate in and enjoy the, our parks more. So, yeah, I think, I think it needs to be increased so that we can, um, and I don't, I mean, it went from a drastic, it was 6,000 to 2,000, 4,500 to 2,000. Why even the decrease, except they were trying to bring in more development? And I honestly would rather, if they want to develop out here, then they need to provide community services for us. That's the way I look at it.
No, I, I agree with you, Susan. The most frustrating thing of being the liaison to the Parks Committee is that we've got a very, very good and dedicated team there that doesn't have the funding that a lot of cities around us do have, and, and they've done wonderful, a wonderful, wonderful job with our parks with what they have to work with. But we just don't have anything to really work with. I mean, we're talking $50,000 for, you know, new swing sets and playground equipment because our other stuff is falling apart. I mean, this stuff adds up and it adds up fast.
Parks are expensive.
Hmm. And I'd love to see connected trails. I mean, we've got some of the most beautiful scenery around here. To connect this stuff would be great. And, uh, one, it, it comes from the development, and at $2,000, it's, it's really not enough when it comes to putting in trails. I mean, Baton was going to be a ton of money, the one they were thinking about working on. Even some of the smaller ones. We've got a ton of property in this city that we saved that connects a lot of this stuff. If you look up, you know, our property identification stuff that we could use, and that was probably planned to use, it, it's just funding. And I know we lost some funding at one point. I don't know if it was to the sewer or, or whatever years ago, but if there was a way we could increase and bring in revenue, I think everybody in the city would enjoy it. It's just finding out. I know there's a lot of grants available and so forth, but that's usually after the fact, where you have to have a plan and they cover 50% of this and 50% of that, but you have to have the 50% to put up too.
And I think developers can definitely afford it. When I look at what they're putting in, they can afford it.
So when capstone down on the golf carts, they are done with all their trails and that, we inherited the maintenance and everything.
Hmm.
Okay. Do we shovel those in the winter?
Oh, that would be a Nate question. I'm not sure what the priority is on that.
I know they do booster in the winter.
Because those are some big trails down there. One's eight foot and one's 10 foot asphalt.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, that's, I think I'm hearing, well, at least a couple of you in agreement, uh, for looking at an increase. The question would be, how much? And, um, and do you want to add the trail portion for consideration?
I like the trail portion.
I definitely like the trail portion, and I think it, it should go up to at least 4,000.
On the park dedication?
It went from 6,000 to 2,000. I think it should go at least back to 4,000. Put it in the middle and see how that works, and then if we need it to go back to 6,000, we can do that another year.
Yeah, I think we lowered it because of the surrounding communities and what they were charging.
Does that include the trail then, or no?
The 4,000, no, that, I think the trail could be separate.
Okay.
Because you know what? I think if it's a lot split or something like that, I don't think we would want to do a trail for that. It would just have to be for our development.
I think for lot splits, we do charge park dedication.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we wouldn't need to do a trail for them.
Okay. So what's a number you'd like to start with on a trail?
I have no idea. I'm sorry. I don't, I know they're expensive, but, um, well, for instance, if it were, the capstone, give them the option of putting it in or charging them about what it would cost.
Take a look at page 11. That has some sample trail.
Oh, thank you.
What is that, a four by four section? A unit? How big?
Per, per unit, per property.
Per property.
Per property, yeah.
But what are they getting for that? It's just a flat.
Just cash. Yeah. Go into a trail account and use that for replacement or new trails or whatever.
When a new business comes in, they pay park dedication or not?
Yeah, the new business pays, uh, uh, let me see, recreational fees of public use and 2,000 per acre park dedication fee for commercial light industrial developments.
Yeah, that should be 4.
So you want to do 4,000 and 1,000?
Hmm.
We're going to kick this down to parks, right?
Uh, we would, we would include parks in the discussion, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what their opinion is too.
I'll have Nate do an agenda item on that. Any further discussion on that one?
So you're talking trails here. Does that, I see in some of this, that includes either or, trail or sidewalk, or how we, because I see a lot of this on page 12 there, they're talking about sidewalk trail regulations. So are they considering sidewalks trails?
I think you can use them as trails.
Right.
If that's the way you would want to have that done. I mean, you can certainly require sidewalks by code and charge a trail fee as well. I mean, it's however you, whatever the policy needs to be.
Right.
Because even though you have a sidewalk, you may still want to go on a trail walk, you know, and if you're looking at a user pays type of concept, you know, whoever moves into those developments will be utilizing all the amenities. Sidewalks on both sides of the street, a trail may be required to be substituted for a sidewalk in areas in which the trail is part of the city's comprehensive trail plan So there are some exceptions.
When it says no requirements on cul-de-sac, does that mean those streets don't have, they don't need a trail or a sidewalk?
Evidently not according to our code right now, because they're kind of a dead end. Now, if you have a trail going through two homes, you know, going out and connecting to another trail, that would be something you could negotiate with that developer.
But if that development had a, say it was a block instead of a cul-de-sac, they would have a sidewalk all the way around? But if you have a cul-de-sac at the end of a long street, all those houses, they don't get a sidewalk or a trail because it's considered a cul-de-sac?
Right.
I think one interpretation could be along the street, it would be required on one side, but as soon as you hit the cul-de-sac, that just on the cul-de-sac would not have it.
Might depend on the length of the cul-de-sac. Some cul-de-sacs are terribly long, but.
I know the street to them is terribly long. Cul-de-sac better not be terribly long.
No, no, the street to it, yeah, the street to it. I think one of the benefits of sidewalks, of course, is to get people out of the way of traffic moving, and cul-de-sacs generally don't have the same amount of traffic that, you know, regular roadways do.
I can't remember where it is, but there is a cul-de-sac that ends in it, at the very end, it goes into a trail to a park. Does anybody remember where that is off the top of your head? I can't remember where it is. I know, but there's no parking signs on the cul-de-sac, and I just thought, well, this is not too bright.
Yeah, I know.
I can't remember where it is, but I'm thinking, where do I park if I want to go for a walk?
At home.
Way too far for that, but it wasn't close to my house.
It's on the backside of the fireman's one in Bethel.
Hmm. So this is for all of the developers in our city, right, Matt?
This would be for all the developers with developments after it's adopted.
Sorry.
Yeah.
But right now, everyone's supposed to pay this for 2,000 than it is right now?
Hmm.
Okay.
So they would be grandfathered in existing developers?
Hmm.
Yep.
Thoughts, and, uh, bring it back to the park, see what their thoughts are, and see what direction do we want to go with this?
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right, let's do that then. Any other items?
No other items for this evening in a work session.
All right. At this time, I'll close the work session.